Can you hear me Kenny?
Yes, I did.
Kenny, can you hear me? You can't? Geez. Kent County Board of Supervisors meeting April 13th, 2020 is now 6:00 PM. And we will have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Tiller, please.
Please, Ron. Ms. Bryant. I was gracious, however, Father, we thank you for the state and we thank you for the opportunity that we could come here tonight to conduct this meeting. Keep us safe and keep us healthy, as always, but these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledges to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Tiller.
You're welcome.
Now, we will have a roll call by Ms. Watkins, Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood. As we review our consent agenda, we ask if you have any comments, corrections, deletions. Now, we entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt resol- Resolution R-18-20. No, that's the wrong one. My bad. Let me go back. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please? Mr. Evelyn.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Um, can you hang on one second, please? What, the, um, bottoms bridge sewer and water break, was that in the consent agenda?
Correct.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Ms. Page.
Aye.
At this time, we have our citizens' comment period. All right, thank you.
We had no one to sign up, so we will close our, um, citizens' comment period. Um, our residence administrators, um, report, um, VDOT is, um, doing social distancing, so they will not be joining us this evening. However, they did, um, send a report for, um, our viewing pleasure. Um, next we will move on to our presentations. Um, we will not be having, um, item number one, which is the, the Diaska Creek no wait zone, resolution R-18-20. Um, we will be, um, doing, gathering more information on that resolution and, um, coming back later, um, to vote on that. Item number two, Mr. Hathaway will present the election of health insurance benefits to the board. Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Item two, you have before you a resolution, uh, that would, that would enable the Board of Supervisors to receive, to participate in the county employee health insurance program. Uh, this was discussed during our budget retreat and we've consulted with Anthem, our health insurance provider. And, um, in order to, for the board to participate, um, in the county's health insurance program, this resolution is, is required. Um, enclosed in the resolution is the plan rates, um, which shows the contribution of the member, the employee, or what will be the board, as well as the county's contribution and the total cost for each of the plans. The plans are the same for the board as they would be for all county employees, which is required by code. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Now, can we entertain a motion, please?
I'll try again.
Okay.
Try the right one this time. Madam Chair, I move to adopt resolution R-19-20, allowing the New Kent County Board of Supervisors to participate in the county's group health insurance plan beginning in fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller.
Ma- Madam Chairman, before we vote, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Steers.
Does this plan, is, is it, uh, all, if one supervisor decides to participate in the program, then all five have to? Or we can pick and choose and say yes or no?
You can pick and choose and say yes or no. Uh, we have to offer it or make it available to all five members, um, but you don't have to elect to move forward with it.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway.
Any other questions? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please? Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
No.
Mr. Evelyn.
Aye.
And Ms. Page.
Aye.
Sure, yes, yes. Thank you. Uh, the next item on your agenda is the consideration of, um, obligation school bonds, uh, for the construction of a new elementary school. Uh, this is not a new item. Uh, we've discussed this at our last meeting. Uh, this is in regards to, uh, the construction of a new elementary school, uh, to be located in property that we've currently purchased and located in the Quentin area of, of the county. Uh, we have Ted Cole here with Davenport and Associates, uh, that can give us a summary of the actions that's needed today.
Good evening. Following up on some of our prior discussions, um, as you all will recall, we have made an application, two applications to the Virginia Public School Authority Funding Program for Schools, and both applications have been approved by VPSA. Um, one application was to participate in their pool program this spring. The other was to participate in what they call a standalone program, um, where it's at your discretion as to the timing. Um, as we've been back and forth with them on how they plan to issue their bonds and their deadlines, with the backdrop of how the municipal market has been, um, struggling to find its footing over the last three or four weeks. Um, here, more recently, the last week and a half, we've seen continued improvement in the bond market. But that aside, what VPSA has said, if, if you want to participate in their pool program, where it's you and I think at this point, seven or eight other, uh, Virginia local governments, um, they need to know that definitively by this Wednesday. Um, so we kind of knew going into this meeting for the pool program, that would be a decision you would need to make this evening to participate or not. Yeah, if you, uh, on, on the standalone resolution, you do not need to take action on that tonight. You can take action on that later this summer, next fall, at your discretion, or you never have to take action on it if you don't want to. So there's no, not, nothing pressing on the standalone option. Um, we have been back and forth with VPSA on how to manage the debt service, um, given the project costs that we're working with. Um, they've been very accommodating and, and can, um, basically accommodate most of the requests we've had in terms of targeting a certain level of annual debt service for the next several years until your existing debt falls off. And we are currently, um, with them on a, uh, a 25-year term, which is what we've been talking about. We're right around 3% um, on a, what we call a true interest cost. Um, and they can accommodate the 25-year financing if they decide to move forward with issuing bonds in the public market, which is how they typically do it, and it's at their discretion. So the 25-year term would be accommodated in a public sale approach. At this point, they believe if they do that approach, um, it will be mid-May before they sell the bonds, because they've got a number of things they need to do to get ready, that they have not yet done. They also are exploring a bank loan, um, for the entire pool. And if you wanted, if they go in that direction, your loan would be limited to 20 years, not 25. So they've got some, some options they're exploring to do their pool program. A bank loan that for New Kent would mean it has to be a 20-year loan. And, or a public sale, which means you could go the 25 years that we have contemplated. Either way, um, we, we have a, a debt structure that I believe will fit within some of the earlier debt service parameters that were used in the budget planning. It was about 1.4 million, 1,450,000 per year of debt service. Um, you have some nice declines in your existing debt in some outer years that we could work around. But I think the long and short of it is, if you want to move forward with the pool, you need to do that tonight. You would need to establish a not-to-exceed interest rate for that resolution. And if you were to do those things, VPSA will decide whether they want to do it as a bank loan or a public sale within the next week. That's their discretion. It's at their discretion. They hope to do that by the end of this week. And they have said that, um, if they're going to do a bank deal, they're going to close that very quickly. And again, that's, that would be the 20-year loan for you all. They're going to do that pretty quickly. They have bank proposals in hand. If they're going to do the public sale, it would be mid-May before they price. And they have said, although it's not usual, but in these circumstances, if they are not able to sell those public bonds by the time that the construction bid exp- if it expires, if, if they've not sold their bonds by that point, they'll let you out of the public sale approach. So in approving the, if you approve the resolution, you're approving going into the spring pool with a not-to-exceed rate of X. That may end up being a bank deal that would close within the next couple of weeks. Or that may end up being a public sale of bonds that would likely price in mid-May. But if it doesn't price at the point in which your construction bids expire, you have the ability to get out without any ramifications. So, so let me stop there, because I know some of you have heard some of these scenarios, or at least some of the work we've been doing and, and back and forth with VPSA, if there's any questions about what I've discussed.
Do we have any questions?
Madam Chair, just one. You said it was seven or eight, uh, other localities in the pool. Uh, was that the number? Has any other localities, since we've spoken, pulled out? I know that one had.
One had, and I'm not aware that any others have at this point, although the VPSA people are reaching out to each of them to say, "We may be doing this as a bank deal," which is a little out of the ordinary, but it, it works fine. And, um, if those participants have a concern about that, for whatever reason, they might, I don't know why they might, but if they do, um, I guess they, they'll take that into consideration when VPSA makes their decision. But I'm not aware of anybody else that's dropped out. I have one other client, Mecklenburg County, that, um, approved this morning. So presumably, they're going to continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Lockwood.
So Ted, you said that, um, if the bond doesn't sell and the, and we don't lock in at the rate we want with the bank, that we can opt out. And we wouldn't know that until presumably mid-May, or if our contract bid expires prior to that. So wouldn't we be sitting there at the 11th hour with no financing?
Right, so, so just let me make sure I'm explaining this properly. If, at their discretion, VPSA is going to make a decision about to, to finance this pool as a bank loan or in the bond market. If it's a bank loan, they're going to execute that, um, financing with the bank this week, and it would close in a couple of weeks. And so if you were to approve the resolution tonight with an interest rate that was, um, that was consistent with the bank loan, and that's around 3%, um, you couldn't back out of the bank loan option. Now, they won't make that decision till later in the week. If, if they decide to go with the public bonds, which they will decide that later this week, but it will still take until mid-May to do that transaction. If, if they have not sold those bonds at the time of the bid, construction bid expiration, they will, they'll say, "You all can remove yourselves." So if the construction bid expires in mid-May, just say, May 15, if VPSA has not sold those public bonds by that date, you can get out. In which case, um, you will, you would not have put any financing in place, but I would expect you wouldn't have executed a construction contract either. So you would want those things to follow in a path, meaning, sort of, don't want to sign the construction contract till you know you have the financing in place, and you don't want to do the financing unless you're sure you have a good construction bid or contract.
And just a follow-up, then, um, do we have an actual date for that bid, that expiration?
I do not have an actual date, but from my conversations with the superintendent who's here today, um, it's my understanding that if the contractor can begin work by June 1st, uh, the contractor's confident that he can meet the contractual schedule requirements, and he can hold his pricing.
Any other questions? Vietnam, thank you so much for your presentation, again. Um, Superintendent Nichols has, um, has arrived. Um, wanted to know if you want it sometime, sir?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. We just finished our board meeting, so I ran over here, uh, to be able to have an opportunity to talk to you. I stood before this board. Uh, you were the very first meeting I attended, uh, after being named superintendent. I made some promises at that meeting. Uh, one was in toward it to lead this great school division. I needed to live in this great county. Uh, mission accomplished, and I tell you, it's one of the best decisions we've made as a family, so 10 months in. And really, thank you for your leadership and partnership. That was the second promise, that we're going to do this work together. Um, so no matter where we go today, that's still the promise that I make to you. Um, really wanted to give you some enrollment transit, some information. You know that we're growing. I just wanted to give you some of the data that we look at, uh, from birth rate to kindergarten. The kid business is great in New Kent. We have more kids, fantastic kids, uh, coming to school and doing great work. But for every kid that's born, more than that shows up in kindergarten. Um, so you see the numbers in front of you, so 2014, 192 stu- kids born in New Kent, 242 arrived in kindergarten. So looking at those numbers are further compounded by the fact that 242 kids are in kindergarten. By the time they get to first grade, we have 272. And by the time we get to second grade, we have almost 300. Every grade level we have, we have more kids that are arriving. Right now, you have the largest freshman class in the history of New Kent. Um, next year will be the largest freshman class in the history of New Kent, followed by the third year, which will be the largest freshman class in New Kent. Uh, we'll be pushing close to 1,200 kids at New Kent High School. But today, we're talking about, um, the elementary. The biggest growth we've had in the county has been at elementary. New Kent Elementary School has almost 11% growth in kids. Um, George Watkins has a 6.3% growth. We anticipate with the recent housing developments, uh, that have been green-lighted for that George Watkins number to grow substantially, because that is the zone for George Watkins. Current school capacity, why is that issue? School capacity is around 700, and you can see right now, both those elementary schools were over capacity. We can add trailers to both of those schools. Um, those come at a cost. So it's about 125,000 per two classroom trailers that you put in, too. And we're really trying to avoid that with this new school build. Um, we have two sets of trailers in the capital budget. We've been really trying to hold off on rolling those onto the elementary school properties, because we know we will only need those until a new school is built. Um, and we can add trailers to school buildings, but what we can't do is increase the size of the common spaces. So even if we add four more trailers to it each new school, we can't make a bigger cafeteria. We can't make a bigger gymnasium. We can't make bigger hallways within those. So we kind of get locked in there. So really having some pretty big capacity issues moving forward with this. Um, listed some of the contracted current expenses, because we have been partnering on this, uh, well before I stood before you 10 months ago. You guys have been at this quite some time. Um, so really, just kind of working through those pieces. And really, whatever decision we make moving forward, we do need a new elementary school. Um, but if we do delay, it's not a net neutral decision. There will be costs associated with that. I mentioned the trailers. Um, we'll have some staffing considerations, and there will be those pieces. I gave you our best guess at a potential infla- inflation of construction cost. Who knows? That could be more. That could be slightly less. Um, but we know chances are, a $35, $37 million school, a year or two from now, may be more than that. So just trying to keep those pieces in mind. And just other things to consider, so George Watkins, for example, really needed an additional second-grade teacher this year. Classroom numbers were about 28. By state, it should have had another teacher. We had nowhere to put another teacher. So we were forced with larger class sizes. One of the reasons that teachers come to New Kent, one, fantastic county, two, fantastic school system, uh, but three, were smaller class sizes than you would get in surrounding localities. We're not being able to deliver on that promise anymore on the recruiting side of things. So that, um, has, has some, has some issues with it. Um, one of the biggest disappointments we have right now in terms of capacity is we have money from, uh, Virginia Preschool Initiative that we could add three more preschool classrooms and serve 60 more pre-K kids. We have no states to put it. So every year, we turn down that money. This new elementary school, uh, design has three additional classrooms in there, so we can actually double the number of pre-K students. So I really, Ms. Page, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak tonight. Um, this is in our strategic plan. It'll continue to be a focus of our work. Uh, but the promises I made when I stood before you to begin my term as superintendent, um, remain the same no matter the outcome of tonight's meeting, that we will continue to partner together. We will continue to do great things for this county. Um, and it'll continue to be one of the best decisions I've made, is to live here in this county. I know you have more than the schools to look out for, and I appreciate the work you do in that. So thank you for your time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at this time?
I felt like I was on a three-minute clock, so I was going fast, just in case I got the buzzer.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Steers.
Uh, Mr. Nichols, of course, this was before you got here.
Yes, sir.
But less than a year ago, the school board was talking to us about building the new school. We were all on board with it. The price tag back then was 24 million. Then it went to 27 million. And in less than a year, it went from 27 million to 38 million. Can you explain to the people what's the additional cost?
Uh, the additional cost, from my limited vantage point as far as term of service, uh, really related to construction costs, related to contractor costs, related to costs associated with the design of the school. Um, we received five bids for the new school. Four of them were within $200,000, $300,000 of each other. So we really felt they were good bids, but even they came in higher than we were anticipating them coming in. That is the worry moving forward, is that, that could continue to be the trend. Um, in talking to our architects, uh, one of the increasing worries is now on the supply chain for materials. So looking at, we have guaranteed pricing that, I believe Mr. Lockwood asked the question about how long we have this in place for. So the bid is good for 90 days, so that takes us just past that June 1st, um, timeframe. That's the pricing we know and the pricing we're locked in for. Uh, so construction costs, material costs, um, costs associated with moving dirt and everything else with it. I can't take you back to 24 to get you to 37, but those are some of the, the big pieces in, in my top.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Are there any more questions?
I want to thank you Superintendent Nichols for being here and speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Page, for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Um, we've heard, um, financials, uh, how the pool works and the standalone and the banks. Um, we've heard from Superintendent Nichols on the work that's been done. And, um, we thank you and the school board for, for that. And, um, certainly, we know that we need an elementary school. Um, something that we did not know is that we would not be faced with a pandemic, um, that is currently, um, raging throughout our country and across the world. Um, it is the feeling that because of those uncertainties and because of uncertainty of what, uh, future economic situation will be here in New Kent County, that we will, um, we will defer this, uh, matter into a later date and, um, come back and discuss the new elementary school here in New Kent, New Kent, Virginia. Thank you so much. And next item we'll move on to is a resolution recommending denial of the Virginia DEQ application to reissue the Virginia, um, pollution abatement permit, VPA 0080. Resolution is R-20-20, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. You have before you Resolution R-20-20. Again, as the chair mentioned, this is a resolution recommending denial of a Virginia Department of Environmental Quality application to reissue an existing permit that would allow the application of biosolids to a farm located in the northwestern portion of the county. We've received requests from residents within the county for us to consider the proposed actions that you have before you. I've tried to take their concerns and draft that into the resolution that you have before you for your consideration. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Evelyn.
This farm is located in my district. I know it very well. I haven't had any calls about this. Don't get me wrong, I agree that, I mean, I'm not a fan of putting biosolids on properties, farms throughout the county, but I know this farm hadn't put it on there in years. I think it's just a renewal process. But my big concern is here, we've got stuff in here talking about the coronavirus. New Kent County State blah blah responded to the coronavirus pandemic and focused on reducing exposure. It all sounds good, but we don't have the science to back that up yet. It's all through this resolution. So I don't know if we're putting the cart before the horse here. Don't be the first one to put some type of resolution out like this. I just have a little bit of concerns about that. Don't get me wrong, I've been, I've supported biosolids on farms throughout the county, but this is a... At the end of the day, this resolution ain't going to mean anything anyway, as y'all all know, because DEQ's got the final say. And it's almost a, we have a wastewater treatment plant that we're sending waste to in Henrico. And it's like, we're going to send you our waste, but our waste is too good to put back on our fields. So I just have a little bit of concern about the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, for your comments.
If I may just add, Madam Chairman, there have been reports written in Europe about the coronavirus being detected in...
Mr. Lockwood, just turn this speaking to this, so everybody can hear you.
Okay.
There you go, thank you.
There have been reports in Europe where the coronavirus has been found in water treatment facilities in Europe. So, you know, I personally don't see it as a huge threat or maybe just another reason to question this stuff. But it has been found in waste streams, so it is certainly a potential threat. I think it should be taken seriously as far as spreading these products on land, especially land that has a lot of surrounding waterways, streams, lakes, the Pumonkey River, where we're going to be drawing our water from one day. So I think it should be noted that it really doesn't need to be used here. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Lockwood.
I move to adopt the adoption of Resolution R2020 to recommend denial of the Virginia DEQ application to reissue Virginia pollution abatement permit, number VPA 0080.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
No.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye. All right. Next on our agenda is our public hearings that cannot begin until 7 o'clock. Would you like to break into seven, or go into our elected officials' report? Set the pleasure to the board.
I'm going to go ahead with the elected official's report.
Okay. So, as we go into our elected officials' report, we'll start with District 5, please. Mr. Lockwood, do you have anything?
I just would like to say that, you know, with all the difficulties people are having these days with people being laid off and financial worries and all, that Proclaiming Grace Outreach is still operating their food bank in Barrensville, serving all of New Kent and upper James City County. They are accepting monetary and food donations. You can go to their website or to their Facebook page is probably the most recent information for Proclaiming Grace Outreach. They would certainly appreciate your donations to be able to continue to feed the folks in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Steers?
Madam Chair, I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Tiller?
I'm okay, thank you.
Ms. Evelyn?
Nothing, ma'am.
All right. Well, I have a couple of things. Department of Social Services asked me to, tonight, to let the residents of New Kent County know that they are operating and everything is full speed ahead, that they do have, as of May, I mean, I'm sorry, as of April the 10th, that their office was contacted by 19 New Kent residents. And these residents were volunteering their time to their neighbors. And so they've been running errands and also helping those out that are at high risk or just simply cannot get out. They have been doing things like going to the grocery store, the drugstore, and even doing light yard work. And he wanted me to tell you this for senior couples, and yard work is very light. So far, they have had only four requests. And so if there are requests, they want everyone to know that you can contact the Department of Social Services here in New Kent County. And the number is 804-966-1853. So we thank Mr. Marks and the Department of Social Services for that. And New Kent County, on our planning commission, we have Commissioner Katisha Thomas. Katisha was rewarded for her, for being a hero in saving a young man that was in a car accident not too awfully long ago. Is, that said that I bring you this news this evening. However, on yesterday, her 22-year-old son drowned. So we just want Ms. Thomas to know that we are sending our most heartfelt condolences during this time to her and her family. And also, we wanted to thank this evening for being a great community partner, and that is Colonial Downs and Rosie's. They committed to providing 20,000 meals to our essential workers. And that was not only in New Kent County, but in Richmond, and Benton, and in Hampton. And so they supplied meals. And I can say for Colonial Downs and Rosie's that they have indeed been great community partners. And they are a partner that has done what they have committed to do to help not only our community, but every community that they're located in. So we want to thank them and give them kudos for all that they do. At this time, do we have staff reports?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Before you, you have Resolution R-22-20, which was handed out at your seating. This resolution presents an opportunity to refinance and restructure some of our earlier issued debt. I believe this is related to Pine Fort Park. Mr. Coles is here today to walk you through this resolution, to determine if this is something you'd like to move forward with.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coles?
I do have an updated summary on the refunding, if you'd like me to pass that out. While that's coming around, we had discussed this at the last meeting. It's the potential to refinance a 2018 bond that was issued to BB&amp;T Bank to fund improvements at the Pine Fort Park. It was issued in the fall of '18. And if you get, when you receive the memo, I'm talking off of page one, which is the second, you know, the first page behind the cover. And I'm talking off the left-hand side, just an overview of what was issued in 2018 about, at a par amount or an issue amount of 3.2 million. And you can see that the current amount outstanding down towards the bottom left is a little over 3 million. The final maturity is 10/1 of 33, and it has a fixed rate of 3.58%. Technically, the documents that were put in place in '18 allowed for prepayment at the option of the county in whole, as opposed to part prepayment, in whole, on a scheduled payment date with a 1% premium. What BB&amp;T has proposed, and we have an official term sheet from them, and they proposed it on March 24th, is to allow a refunding of the loan and keeping the payment dates the same, keeping the final maturity the same, with a new rate of 2.50%. There would also be a bank, their counsel, their attorney fees would be up to $5,000. And they would waive the 1% penalty and charge a half a percent penalty. So technically, the loan allows for a 1% penalty. They would do this for a half a percent penalty. Moving forward, they would allow, if you were to do this refunding, they would allow the new loan, what we would call the 2020 loan, to be paid in whole at any time with 1% penalty for the first half of the loan and no penalty for the second half of the loan. So it's got roughly 13 years to run, this new 2020 bond would, if we do this. And you can prepay it in the future for the first six, six and a half years. There's a penalty for the second half of the loan. There's no penalty. The only requirement is, at this point, is if this board would like to move forward, there's a single resolution to consider this evening. And if that is approved, we would need to schedule and adopt a similar resolution at the EDA level, because they are the technical issuer of this debt. Pretty common practice with these types of loans. And all of that would need to happen so that we could close the loan by May 11th. So that rate of 2.50% is locked in, so to speak, provided we can close by May 11th. And I think we would be able to do that if you all would like to move forward. We have shown on page two the details of the loan on the left, what we're paying back, excuse me, paying off, and what we're issuing at the new rate. And on the right-hand side, particularly the far right in that gray area, we're showing you the annual savings from the debt service. So again, we're not shortening the loan, we're not extending the loan. We are reducing the interest rate. We are incurring some costs to do all of this. And we have assumed that those costs would be rolled into the transaction. I'll show you the detail of that in a moment. And what you're seeing on the right-hand side of page two is the net reduction in debt service for the new loan compared to the old loan. And it takes into account those issuance costs. Those are already figured into the new debt service. So when it's all said and done, we're averaging around, you know, call it $11,000 a year if you were to move forward. And then, on the final page of this, we've shown you the cost of issuance budget for this, between the bond council fees, the advisory fees, and the bank council, which is McGuire Woods. It's a little over $66,000. And again, what our numbers assume is that you would include that amount in the borrowing and you would, you know, so you don't come out of pocket. And when you include that amount in the borrowing, that gets baked into, on the prior page, the new debt service. So we are showing you the savings truly net of those costs. So again, there's a resolution that lays this out that was prepared by Sands Anderson. There would need to be an EDA meeting at some point. And the term sheet is good for a closing by May 11th. Any questions?
So, I do have a question. So if we go down to year 2030, and we wanted to pay this off, not only would we be saving $156,253, but we would be saving the principal and interest from 2030 to 2034, for four years, correct?
Right. If you wanted to do that in 2030, you would have saved all those dollars in the prior years. And then you'd save the interest due on the remaining years. But that $156, you would have to cut that back by, one, two, three, about four or five years. Because those savings, you don't recognize those savings unless you let it run to the final maturity.
Okay.
So if you choose to prepay it, you'll get whatever annual savings have actually been recognized, plus the interest that you would no longer have to pay if you were to pay it off.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Do we have, Ms. Evelyn, do we have a motion on this resolution?
Madam Chair, I think whenever we can save taxpayers' money, it's a good thing to do. And I don't understand, I mean, I wouldn't think it'd be any way we would have it closed by May 1st with those fees, right? That's what I was thinking. With that, right, with that being said, I move to approve the refinancing of the lease revenue bond, Series 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Seth, will you say something else?
Yes, ma'am. Also before you, you have Resolution R-23-20. This resolution proposes to suspend the processing of agricultural and forestal district application for this current 2019-2020 fiscal year. One of the purposes for this resolution, as we all deal with the coronavirus pandemic, we anticipate our reduced revenues for the next fiscal year, as we'll talk about later on this afternoon and the days to follow. We are taking a look at our budget, the budget that I proposed to you back in March, and finding areas where we can cut our expenditures anticipation of the reduced revenues. One of the things I'd also like to propose is for us to consider placing a one-year halt moratorium on the agricultural and forestal district program. The benefit to that is, by not letting new properties into the AFD program, you would be saving losses that you would receive for those new properties that would be receiving benefits, being in the program. With the AFD process, there's an annual application process. The deadline for applications to be submitted to the county is March 1st. We've passed that deadline, and we've received five applications to date. And on top of that, we have two districts, the Dieaskan Creek and York River AFD, that are up for renewal. By adopting this resolution, you're not disbanding the Dieaskan Creek or York By adopting this resolution, you're not disbanding the Daskin Creek or York River AFD. Those properties and those AFDs will continue to operate in the AFD. We're just pushing their renewal date out, and it would come up for renewal the following application year.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Mr. Hathaway, approximately how many acres are we talking about that were applied for in that March deadline?
I, I don't know the total acreage. I, I can get that information for you, but I, I don't know the total acreage.
And this would not affect anybody who had their land in the AFD last year, right?
That's correct. This will not affect anybody that is currently participating in the AFD.
Thank you.
So this will, Madam Chair, this will push everybody out one year. So, I mean, you said it won't be four AFDs coming up the following year for renewal, just still, it's just pushing everything back one year.
That's correct.
And I would tend to, we've done this one time before, I forgot what year it was, but...
We did this, actually, I believe we did a two or three-year moratorium. Well, we adopted a resolution in two thousand and twelve, which went into effect two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen.
And I just noticed a lot of paperwork for staffing with us, working on a alternative, alternate schedule, just trying to get all this paperwork done. It's a tremendous amount of paperwork to get done, trying to get a hold of, I know the forestry department, you got to get a hold of them and try to get approval from the forestry department, and they're working on a part-time schedule, and then, then the Extension Office, so I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to put this moratorium on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Yes, Mr. Evelyn.
I move to approve resolutions suspending the processing of agriculture and forestal district applications for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Hathaway, you have anything else?
No.
All right. Any other business? Nope. Appointments? Do we have any appointments by district? Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Evelyn? And I don't have any, any appointments not de, delegated by district? Mr. Lockwood?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any regional boards and commissions? Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Evelyn?
I see that the planning commission approved John Moya's reapportment for the planning commission to represent a plan RVA. So, unless you want to do it, here's your... I move to point, John Moya is New Kent's planning commission representative to plan RVA to serve a one-year term beginning January one, two thousand and twenty, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. All right. And I have five, six minutes before seven o'clock. Would you like to take a short recess? All right, we'll take a short recess, and then we'll be back for our public hearing at seven.